Good morning, everybody. I call to order the Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting of February ninth, two thousand sixteen. Would everybody please stand and join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will a clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Yep.
Commissioner Gile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on to the public forum. It's a time where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Karen Shade, one-one-one, Wisconsin. It's been over a hundred days since the syphilis outbreak, and the Saline County Commission, also known as the Board of Health, has ignored my request to formally review the outbreak. So I asked Jennifer Vandeveld, Director of Disease Control and Prevention at KDHE. She wrote that KDHE disease investigators were in charge of the investigation from the start. They have specialized training from KDHE and the Center for Disease Control. The local health department provided immediate care to multiple individuals that the KDHE investigators sent in for testing and treatment. We've also learned that the Kansas Health Alert Network did not reach all local healthcare providers as intended. It also emerged that some of the area's school boards' health curriculums talk only about sexually transmitted diseases as pathogens, and they don't talk about risky sexual behavior. So when the media coverage, or when the media covered the outbreak, some individuals sought expensive healthcare through emergency rooms. Vandeveld goes on to say that the syphilis outbreak primarily involved heterosexuals and some used methamphetamines. And we know from other studies that the rates of chlamydia and gonorrhea are very high amongst our young people. What surprised me most with the outbreak was that this was just another way meth is showing up as a source of concern. We see it in the jail bookings. We know it from drug court. We know that that's filled beyond capacity. We know it's successful. But one of the things we don't often talk about is there are crying babies in drug court. And that means moms likely use meth during, prior, or after their pregnancies. And meth really does victimize children. Because commissioners oversee the health department, community corrections, and certain aspects of the courts and jail, you have the power to provide some synergy to address these public health issues. You've set up a committee to reduce the jail population, but don't include the city or health department. And the health department is structured so one individual serves as director, health educator, and public health emergency preparedness coordinator. That leaves very little room to address the public health aspects of this outbreak. There are things that can be done. We can look for successful community strategies for reducing meth use. The state can fund and expand drug court and other treatments. School boards can strengthen health education curriculums. And individuals who care about public health can run for the county commission. I'm just sad to say that this current commission, you struggle to get along for the relatively short times you meet each week. I wish you could rise above pettiness to address important concerns. There isn't the unity, there isn't unity in our community, and some of that comes from this commission. And in that way, we are all diminished. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
Ray Ruska, two-thirty-five, North Santa Fe. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I had a quick question, and it's about the item number one on the agenda, which says approve public forum agenda as presented. This has been placed on the agenda for a short period of time here, and I'm curious of what the purpose is, and I would ask for an explanation if I could...
Sure. It's a good question. It came out of the parliamentary training that we had, and I think the concern was, we were not adding or subtracting things from the agenda properly. And so, this is what was recommended, that this is the time, let's just say we wanted to pull off item three, or pull, or add item three point A, you know? This is the time that we would do it. So parliamentary-wise, and again, you know me, I'm not an expert at it, but I'm getting better, is that's why this was added. So, I'm assuming most times, I'm assuming ninety-five percent of the time, there won't be any changes in the agenda, and we're just approving the next, we're not approving that we're going to pass these next things. We're just approving that the agenda is properly done.
And say, and say that a guest came, comes in that they're going to deal with on something, and they don't understand, then they can understand that you'll be on item three, and we'll talk about it then.
Or if we're pulling it off, then they can leave at that time.
And we're not going to do it today, yeah. You don't have to stick around. Because, you know, there may be something will change on this afternoon's agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Ruska, this is the first board that I have sat on that I noticed that there was no approval of the agenda. And sometimes our agenda is small, but, you know, or what I call just appropriately accurate time. But if you ever have a large agenda, and there's something that's item number eight, and someone has sat there for an hour and a half waiting for item number eight, and imagine yourself being that person, and we get to item number eight, and we take it off right then and there. It's upsetting to think that you sat through a meeting that you didn't want to sit through, or didn't pertain to you, or you only came to listen to item number eight, and you had to sit through an hour and a half of a meeting for something that got taken off at that point.
Well, wouldn't it be appropriate to bring that fact out at the beginning of the meeting?
That's what this is. That's what this is.
And that's, it's always item number one, or will be always item number one, yeah.
I did notice that you stopped using the consent agenda, and I was just curious of what the reason was.
In my time here, I haven't ever seen a consent agenda. I know the city uses one, but in my time here, we've never had a consent agenda.
I think we've maybe been talking about it, you know, previously, but...
Maybe, maybe talking about it, but it's never come. I know the city does use it, but we...
Well, yeah, yeah, you're right.
In my time in the year I've been here, we've never seen it. We, we talked about it maybe, but, so...
I'd hate to admit that you were right.
Well, it'll happen.
But in this case, I think you are.
It'll happen every once in a while.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we will move to item number one.
That's approval of agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes five-zero. Item number two?
Approval of county commission minutes for February second, two thousand sixteen.
Are there any public comments on this? Bring it back to the commission for action.
I move that we, Chairman, accept the county commission minutes for February the second, two thousand sixteen, as presented.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Moving on to item number three?
It's a resolution sixteen dash twenty-one ninety-four, reappointment of Darrell Wilson and Christina Ritter to the twenty-eighth District Judicial Nominating Commission as non-lawyer members, and have report by Rita Deister, our county administrator.
Rita?
Darrell Wilson and Christine Ritter's term for your terms is expiring, and they are eligible to be reappointed to serve on the Judicial District Nominating Committee. I'm happy to say that we had eight applications or interest, citizen interest forms filled out, which I'd like to thank the public for that, because we're always looking for people who are willing to serve on these different committees. But both Darrell Wilson and Christina Ritter has informed us they would be willing to serve another four-year terms if so appointed by the commission.
Two outstanding people, and I would support any resolution, or any motion that comes forward.
Mr. Chairman, that, that name is Christine Ritter. I want to make sure I don't have that resolution in front of me. So, resolution's in your blue folder. I want to make sure that's Christine Ritter.
It's not Christina.
Right.
Yeah, it's Christine.
Okay.
With an E at the end of it.
With an E.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any public comment on this issue?
Lauren Nadel Salina, aren't you going to have to take a vote on them applicants? Think you got more than two?
No, no. We, we did last week, we, we decided that these two should be reappointed. So we did that last week. Yep.
Yes, to confirm that, you're, you made a motion last week's minutes, February second, like minutes to, to do that, yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution sixteen dash two-one-nine-four, the reappointment of Darrell Wilson and Christine Ritter to the twenty-eighth Judicial Nominating Commission as non-lawyer members, term beginning March seventh of two thousand sixteen and ending March first of two thousand twenty.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes five-zero. Item number four?
This is resolution sixteen dash twenty-one ninety-three. It's a right-of-way vacation on North Fifth Street. This was requested by Mr. Todd Roeburg, landowner of that, the both sides of that road. It's on North Fifth, basically north, a little ways north of Pleasant Hill Road. That inscription is, is a long description that's laid out by our, our surveyor, Terry Madison. The right-of-way is about sixty feet wide. This had been set up as a project number forty-four. They used to call it Meridian Highway way back in the day, back in nineteen nineteen. As I said, Mr. Roeburg purchased, just recently purchased the west side of this, on the land, west side of this road. Is that correct, Mr. Roeburg? And so he owns everything there, up to the closed bridge on the north end of this proposed right-of-way vacation. It is just north of where Palmer Trucking land is, there along North Fifth Street. It was published once in the Journal last weekend. Since there was no other landowners involved in this, we, we didn't have to mail notices to adjacent landowners to let them know about this, because Mr. Roeburg is a, is a sole landowner there. He just simply wants, I believe, and he can correct me, he's here in the audience, he can correct me if I'm wrong, I think he wants to close this off to alleviate dumping that's taking place down there towards the bridge. Possibility of anything else, unsavory going on down there. So, it's his, his intent is to, to vacate that road, and of course, that becomes his property as well. If you decide, decide you want to do this, the county road and bridge department then will not have any other responsibility from that point to the north, north of Palmer Trucking, as I said, to maintain that road any, any longer.
Any questions?
Will you fence that off there to where you can control that?
Todd, would you, yeah, if you could, please. I told you, you may have some questions.
Well, she's a very sensible.
That's good. That's good. I'd like to hear.
We're supportive, but we do...
Yeah, we're supporting it.
Do I need to state my name, or?
Yeah, you better.
Yeah, it's Todd Roeburg, twenty-five thirty-nine Dundee Lane. And yes, my plan is to, is to put a gate there at my property, at the, be the south end of my property there.
Sure. And that way, you're, you're curtailing the, the problem that's going on down there by the bridge.
Correct.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Also, I understand, excuse me, I understand that bridge is not on any replacement plans in the near future, or even the distant future. I don't, it'd be a very expensive bridge to replace because of the depth of the river in there.
Right. And that used to be eighty-one highway.
Right.
That's what I understand now. I didn't, I didn't realize.
Yeah, that was built in nineteen twelve, and the statute used to be right there at St. John's Military. We used to play on it as kids.
Yeah, that was a little before my time.
Yeah.
Todd, are you okay with everything on this?
Sure.
On not a how-trick?
Yep.
What's going to become of the bridge? Are we going to, are we still responsible for that bridge, right?
I, yes, sir. I, Mr. Cable's not here right now, but I would say that that's, it's still the county's responsibility. Nobody has taken, like, we've seen other bridges, nobody's taken those barricades down to drive a ATV, or perhaps, maybe people walk across it. I don't know that. But the people who live on the north side of that have access to old eighty-one highway.
Well, it's, it's our, to our advantage to close the road on all four of that, but I think we need to look into doing something with that bridge. It's going to have to be done.
Yeah, I'm not sure what plans are, Commissioner. I, it's something we can talk to.
Make sure that, let's talk to Neil next time.
You could probably, you book your cat and drag it over on your side.
That's a pretty good-sized bridge. It would, yeah, I mean, it'd be a little bit of work taking it down, but, yeah, but it's possible.
We need to look into that after we...
Commissioner Smith, you got a question?
Well, does vacating the road imply we walk away from the bridge, or what, what is the legal status?
It's up to that bridge. It doesn't include the bridge.
We could come from the other side.
We still have the other side to take it out on, yeah.
We could take it out from the other side. Todd would probably let us do it from his side, too, but, maybe not.
I wouldn't have a problem with it if the bridge comes out of there. I mean, it, I would actually like to see the bridge out of there, but...
That way, you've got it.
Keep people walking from the other side.
Keep them from coming over there anyway, coming through the back door.
Right.
That's not good.
For safety reasons, we need to...
Yeah, let's, let's follow up on that.
We'll follow up.
All right. Is there any other public comment on this issue? Thank you.
Ray Ruska, two-thirty-five, North Santa Fe. I think it's a good idea to allow Todd to remove that bridge, since he's got the equipment, they can do it. Maybe you ought to put that as a condition.
Very good.
That's, that's not his responsibility.
All right, bring it back to the commission for further comments or action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the right-of-way vacation on North Fifth Street as listed in resolutions, resolution sixteen twenty-one ninety-three, as recommended by staff.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes five-zero. Todd, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
The process now, Commissioners, is I'll take that, once you sign that resolution, I'll take that over to the register of deeds office to be recorded, and then, and I'll send a copy of that to Mr. Roeburg, of course.
You can file my, over that thing now.
Thank you, Todd.
Item number five.
Before you leave that, do you want to have Road and Bridge talk about the bridge?
I think that we'll follow up on that. I think that's a good, good question.
Yeah.
And because, my lack of knowledge in that area, I mean, there, I'm sure there's other bridges that are in the same situation. Yeah, let's just bring it up next time we see Neil. Yeah.
See, there's another one down the road there on Fifth Street Road, which would, it would be behind, oh, let's see, what do they call that? Roberts Trucking.
Right.
There's one that goes over the Marlberry Creek, and it's been...
But it's an old cement bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's an old cement bridge. Yeah, and...
It's not nearly as dangerous.
Those are things that we probably need to talk about, because that thing could accumulate a lot of trash up in front of...
But the road goes right up to that.
It does. It does.
All right, moving on to item number five.
My crawdad hole.
Excuse me. Emergency management update with Hannah Stanball, the Director of Emergency Management.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll kind of briefly go over some of the activities that we had in both December and January for emergency management, but then also focus to on the statistics report for two thousand fifteen for our rural fire, just to kind of show you just a little bit about the rural fire activities that occur in this county, and how much we appreciate and how much we cherish our volunteers that we have, and the service that they do for our county. For the months of December and January, particularly in December, we had some definitely different weather events, from flooding situations in early December to snow events close to Christmas time. Total precipitation for the two thousand and fifteen year was thirty-two point zero one inches, and that is actually about a half an inch above normal levels for that entire year. So far in two thousand sixteen, average precipitation is point seven-two inches, and that's only just about a tenth of an inch above normal. Predictions are still showing pretty steady for above-normal temperatures and above-normal precipitations through May of this year. We'll see what ends up happening with that. Our emergency management activities for the month of December were pretty typical, end-of-the-year activities as far as meetings and training and exercise workshops, to plan for the next three years out, as far as different trainings that not only our office, but the other entities and other jurisdictions that we work with, that are needing for the next upcoming year, as well as outlining an exercise calendar that we can utilize with all of our different partners and agencies that we work with. Our rural fire activities, I'll just go over for January of two thousand sixteen, since we'll go over some of the, the two thousand and fifteen activities. We did have sixteen fire calls for the month of January, to include four grass fires, two structure fires, one fire alarm, six vehicle fires, one hazardous materials incident, and then two that we classify in the good intent portion of it. What we have in front of you is a document that we do every year, or that we've done every year since, I believe, two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and eleven, to show you the different activities that occur as far as rural fire is concerned. Grass fires are about fifty-five percent of all the different fire calls that we have here in Saline County. So, we try to, to show that as far as their activities. We have it broke down here, and what was in the Commissioner's packet shows the months that typically we see higher grass fires, and to no surprise of us, it's hold pretty steady. March is probably one of our busiest months. We have quite a bit of CRP ground in Saline County, and that contributes a lot to some of the, some of the fires that we have. Also, that March-April timeframe can just be very strange, depending on the year, as to what the weather conditions are. We had a total of fifty-four fire calls, just grass fire calls, in the month of March alone last year, which is, which is pretty high. Residents in Saline County are required to call if they have a valid burn permit. They are required to call us about an hour before they start their burn. Our office is what is, determines whether or not that you're allowed to burn. State statute requires that the wind speeds have to be fifteen mile an hour or below. So, we monitor that. Typically, we're monitoring it, especially during this timeframe, a couple of days out. Just to kind of give you an example, if we know it's going to be a very dangerous fire danger day with strong winds, we won't let anybody burn that day, so...
The other day, when I came and got a permit, they're short, like a hundred over what they were a year ago, or something like that. Is that what I understood?
No, it just kind of depends. It'll pick up.
They're not as many have applied for their permits...
Yeah.
...as of now, and it's kind of unusual.
We usually, we usually see a big rash of people wanting their permits when they know there's a big snowstorm coming, because everybody wants to burn their brush piles when they're standing on the ground.
Right.
Completely understand that. It's a great, great time to burn. We'll see another rash come harvest, when people are wanting to burn their weights double. But I, when I left the office to come over here today, we were up to have issued already like four-hundred and seventy-five burn permits so far for two thousand sixteen. So, and I've got a, there's a statistic in here to show you how many burn permits we typically issue a year. Yes.
Grass fires after dark. I see one was allowed to continue. Frankly, I think there are cases where that ought to be the case.
Yes.
Is that the local fire people look at it and say it's safe? Is that kind of what's needed to happen?
That is correct, Commissioner. We, state statute does not allow for controlled burns of brush after dark, and unless they have special permission. Typically, we completely understand that there are some of those brush piles that are, are very large, and we understand that even after dark, there, it may still be smoldering. There may still be flames visible. The biggest thing that we have to harp on is the fact that it has to be watched the whole entire time. You can't light it and let it burn down, and then at supper time, go home. It, it really does need to be monitored. And that's, again, a state regulation that, that shows, so. But, you know, we're understanding. We know that if it's going to burn after dark, it's, the fire chief usually is the one to take a look at it and just make sure that it's not going to go anywhere, and that everything's going to be okay. And they have the proper manpower there on site to, to be able to control it.
And if a person wants to burn pasture, is it a good idea to contact the local fire people and ask them to be standby in the case, or what, what do you suggest?
Several years ago, we would allow that. Not so much anymore now, and it's just due to the whole liability issues. We try to notify, especially if we know that there's going to be a very large burn going on, like, maybe an entire section, we'll typically notify the fire chief and let him know that that's going on. But for the most part, the, they're only required to contact my office or the nine-one-one dispatch center an hour before they start. It's good practice, good communication, if you know who your fire chief is, to give them a call and let them know that, hey, this is what I'm going to be doing, and this is the equipment that I have on hand to be able to control it. That, I mean, that's, that's always good communication to have.
Yeah.
One of the biggest things that has been quite a topic of, of conversation is that of, of controlled burns. Just to kind of give you an idea as to how many of the grass fires that we do have that are considered controlled burn-related, meaning either you started a controlled burn, and the wind kicked up, and the fire got away from you, or you started a controlled burn, and you didn't have the proper equipment with you to be able to control it yourself, so you ended up having to call the fire department. Or it's, you know, something that could just be even accidental, too. But when we looked at all of the grass fires that we had in, in the year two thousand and fifteen, and broke it down to find out exactly how many of them were controlled burn-related, we came up with the number of sixty-six, which, if you put it percentage-wise, as to the number of controlled burns that were called into our office, or to the nine-one-one dispatch center, and the number of controlled burns that got away, it's only about three percent. But still, we cannot express enough on how important it is, the responsibility that landowners and homeowners have to have proper fire control. And there's tons of education that's out there, and we can certainly help with directing residents and landowners to those, those proper things, so they can be better educated as to what they need to do. The, let's see, the other one that I kind of wanted to go over, just because it's, it's more typical here in, in the city of Salina, but this was a question that kind of came up to us, too, is fire alarms. The city of Salina has actually passed resolutions for both the police department and the fire department as far as false alarm ordinances. We have the same thing out in the county. For the two thousand and fifteen year, we had thirty-seven fire alarms. And out of those thirty-seven, there were only three of them that were actual carbon monoxide levels that were too high, actually true alarms. So, that does go to show that, that there is false alarm that do happen still out in the county as well. And this is just for the fire department, does not include the sheriff's office. We do have quite a few mutual aid agreements, not only with Saline County, but then also with the city of Salina. We had a total of eleven calls for mutual aid, whether we were going into another county and helping them with a fire, or coming into the city of Salina and helping them with a fire. From the medical side of things, all but one of the six fire districts that we have have first responder programs, meaning if a medical call goes out, or an injury accident goes out, that fire district is paged to go and assist. Typically, they are there before the medics from Salina get there, to render first aid, and so on and so forth. But just to kind of give you an idea, there was a total of three hundred and three medical calls out in the county in two thousand and fifteen. So if you look at two thousand and fifteen in total, a total of six hundred and twenty-six, both fire, injury accident, and medical calls out within the county, broken to six different fire districts. So if we look at it in comparison, we did have a little raise in, in grass fires, just to show, in two thousand and fourteen, we had a hundred and fourteen total grass fires, but in two thousand and fifteen, we had a hundred and thirty-nine. So that's an increase of about twenty-five. Overall, in total, between the, the two... Overall in total, between the two years, we had an increase of five fires from 2014 to 2015. And then the controlled burn permits, just to show you, Commissioner Guile, you had asked about, you know, kind of where we were at as far as the number of permits that we issue. Last year in 2015, we issued a total of one thousand thirty-nine burn permits from my office and then with the rural fire districts being able to issue permits, a total of two thousand and, I'm sorry. So, the increase in the permits issued through our office has actually been pretty good. We've implemented the online burn permit system where people can apply for burn permits online and we just email them back to you. That's been very popular. We had a total of two hundred, or two thousand two hundred and ninety-five controlled burns conducted in the 2015 year, which is quite significant over 2014. When we look at 2014, we were actually in a burn ban for about six weeks, so that's what contributed to the lesser numbers of controlled burns. And then some nice, just little graphs to illustrate where everything's at. Obviously, the far one on the left shows the grass fires and that is the most significant call that we do have. And for the breakdown as far as the fire districts themselves, District Five, District Three, and District One typically are our busiest fire districts. And then a chart to show the months that we typically have the most fires, which again is that March-April. And if it's drought conditions in July, fireworks tend to have quite a bit of impact on our fire level in July. That is all I have for you. I hope that this is just a really good illustration to show you the activities that our volunteer fire departments contribute to the overall.
A couple of things. I was surprised at the high number of medical calls.
Mm-hmm.
Like, half of the calls are medical.
Yep.
And the people are trained to attend to people in those conditions?
Yes.
The other thing I'm interested in, the volunteers get paid anything or what happens there?
It depends on the fire district. There's a couple of the fire districts that do allow for response pay, but it is broken to how many calls, they usually typically budget, out of their budget, a certain number or a certain level and then depending on the number of calls that they have, they divide that by how many firefighters showed up or how many calls did each firefighter make. Typically, you're probably looking at maybe ten to fifteen dollars per firefighter per call that they made, but that does not, it's not a per hour thing. House fire typically, you know, you're probably out there for about a good five hours. A nice large grass fire, you're out there for a couple hours and that's just on the fire scene. It's not coming back and cleaning up the trucks. It doesn't include your training hours. So, if you look at ten dollars for spending five hours away from your family, it's not...
No, it's not, not at all. But, and we don't make any attempt to reimburse mileage, they've got to drive to the fire station every time.
Yes.
We could do that without any tax implications for them?
I don't know the question on that.
We pay mileage?
I'm sure they probably could.
I would think we ought to at least offer to pay mileage. That doesn't cost them any tax-wise reporting or anything and just a gesture to say thank you.
A lot of firefighters that I know, it's kind of in their blood. It's something they wanted to do and it's volunteering. I think Jim spends a lot of miles driving up and down our county roads and you do a lot of that volunteer.
It's all volunteer.
For your car, you don't get paid your car expense to do that.
I got forty-one thousand miles on it in the last three years that I didn't get paid for.
You know, if you...
But, I enjoy being where I'm at. I like to show my appreciation to the people who are out there working, like say the road and bridge and I've followed, I've followed you guys around on many, many fires also just to see how things are going and enjoy seeing what you guys do. And one of my questions would be the arson. Is there any one district that has more arsons in it than the other? Is it out around the Gypson area? Is that where...
This last, for 2015, we had quite a few of those arson fires.
That's what I thought.
They were all concentrated over in Fire District Number One, which is the Gypson and Kip area.
Dickinson County and, yeah.
Yeah, that could be coming from another county.
And we do take care of Dickinson County in that area.
Yes, that is correct.
Yep. So, there's a lot of things going on out there in that county and I travel the whole county. I don't just travel my district. I travel the whole county and enjoy seeing the bridges that have been accomplished throughout the last three, four years, you know, three and a half years. It's kind of interesting to watch one of them built and the boxes and everything else.
My point was is that I think a lot of people are, do volunteer because they enjoy doing it and they go out and change tires and work on those trucks and have workdays and it's not just, it's volunteer. That's, so I don't, I don't, I really don't. Usually probably live within a five mile radius of the fire station, a lot of them and I don't, I do think Rita would tell us that if we paid a mileage, we'd probably have to report it as income.
No.
No, only above the IRS rate.
Six hundred dollars.
No, it's fifty cents a mile or whatever this federal rate is, you don't report.
Right. Even if it goes over six hundred dollars?
Doesn't matter.
No.
Well, anyway, I've never had anybody ask me, they're always saying we need more equipment. They say that.
They like equipment and they like, which is good and they like training.
And we do have some nice equipment in Saline County.
Beautiful equipment.
We have probably some of the best equipment you'll ever see. The city don't have what we have.
There's always something new out there people like to have.
It is and I want to take this time to thank all those folks that have served on all of this, putting all the fires out and they've done a great job and you just can't thank them enough when you see them going down the road with their own red lights and sirens on their own vehicles to get to the fire station and get on the big bertha and go. And they're always, they're always there.
Good point. Any other questions of Hannah? Public comment?
I think Hannah's doing a great job too.
Thank you.
I reiterate my opposition to increasing the mileage for certain departments. Two weeks ago, you increased the mileage payment for the health department people.
Praizers.
Praizers. You're overpaying them because I only get forty-one and a half cents a mile to drive to the hospital in Kansas City, Wichita, Peak or whatever. I don't recall what you raised them to, but the price of fuel is going down. The index is going down. The social security people are not getting an increase. So, I think you're foolishly spending money that we shouldn't be. You're not obliged to.
All right.
You're reaching, you're overreaching your powers.
All right, thank you. Hannah, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Your reports are always well done and informative, so thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, planning and zoning monthly update with David Neal, our director.
David?
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the first time I've been here this year, so I'm going to give you a kind of a annual report for 2015. Over the years, we average about in ninety-five, because of the building boom back a few years, up to a hundred and seven, depending whether you take a three-year to a ten-year average. We're just a little bit below average. We did ninety-two permits last year. I'm going to blame some of that. When you look at when we do our permits, a lot of them come in springtime or around fall. Springtime was kind of wet last year, so I think a few people just didn't build, which is perfectly normal. Looking at some of the permits that we did, as normal, we did outbuildings, accessory buildings, lots of assorted smaller buildings for residential and farm. We did eighteen new homes this year, whether that's brand new or replacement, either way. That seems to me to be a lot of new homes to be built in Saline County. And as we're categorizing permits, this is the first year we've started categorizing them into what type of permit that is. I hope to see in the future that, is eighteen actually a lot or is that normal for us? When it comes to, the other big thing we do is cell towers. Nothing really new on actual towers, most of it's on the co-location of antennas and I'm expecting to see a few more this year. Every year, cell phone companies invent new technology, which means new antennas up on those towers and they all go through a round of upgrades.
We only had one there.
One new tower.
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest were all co-locations where they're just slapping new antennas up there. Usually, it's taking one antenna down and putting one up.
Mm-hmm.
For the commercial permits that we're working on, Heartland Fuels, I'd go by there the other day. They've got their tank in place now. They're not the fastest construction crew out there, but they'll get it done eventually. GeoProbe just finished up their final inspection. They were, they have the school specialty store down on South Ninth and they just upgraded some garage doors so that they can get their equipment in there, made sure they have ADA access so that they can actually open for business and be, meet all their codes. For the planning activity, we had eight cases in the last year. That's pretty normal. Three of them were code amendments, the voting, the voting limits, the term limits, and then the airport had come in for a change of code. The big thing we'll have coming up this year, we have two of our planning commissioners that will be term limited out, so we'll have two open seats on the planning commission and then we'll have three people that we can either reappoint or appoint new people, whatever we decide to do with the planning commission there. I do have to ask them if they are interested in continuing to serve. Since I'll see them in March, I will ask them then and, sorry, Commissioner Guile?
How's Tom Rexlow?
Tom Rickstrue?
Mr. Rexgrew, how's he doing?
He's doing a good job as far as I can tell?
No, no, I think that he got hurt. I thought maybe you knew about that.
Well, he's had, I don't, I haven't talked to him recently. I know he's had some health concerns.
Yeah.
But, I tend to stay out of people's health concerns. That's their business.
I go to that, but I, I just, Ben, I didn't know where it happened or anything, but...
If there was an accident, I don't know.
Let's move on. Let's go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, if there was something I don't know about that.
When is, when are those appointments going to be for the two new ones?
The seats will be empty. They'll be there for the March meeting, so it will be empty in April and that's what I was going to go into. We don't have to reappoint because the planning commission can operate from anywhere from five to nine members, so it's not an immediate, we must reappoint them. So, you can either take your time or go right away. It's not going to make a difference to us.
Okay.
Also, in April...
I think it'd be good to let people know.
Right.
That there's going to be a reappointment and start getting them...
Do we have, and do we have citizens that have applications on file?
I believe I have one new one in the last year and that's part of why I wanted to announce this here.
Yeah, that's...
So, as you as commissioners or anybody watching on TV, if you know somebody, if your neighbor is half-interested, we have, go to our website, saline.org, and fill out an expression of interest. There are more boards than just the planning commission, so there's more to do and more to help the county with.
Rather than wait until January, you know, it's a good time for us to get started on that. Thanks for giving us warning on that, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that, and sometime we can sit down and go over how, what process you want to use and make sure we do this the way you want to get it done.
Well, the thing is, in January, there'll be different commissioners and if we can...
March.
Or March, but no, but I mean, in January, there's going to be different commissioners.
County commissioners, yes.
So, it'd be good to make some plans and let them know, instead of just walking in and saying, "I don't know what to do." You know, I mean, they don't know what to do and so it'd be good for, start getting those in and...
For us, it's, we won't be having a meeting in April, so we, we won't need anything until at least May and that's if we have an application. But, we, I do want to either reappoint the ones that are at the end of their first term or place a new person, whatever we want to do there. Board of Zoning Appeals, there, we have four people that we should reappoint or look at new people. There is one open seat. It's been open for the last year, but we haven't had to meet with the Board of Zoning Appeals, so it doesn't do much.
Maybe that some of those would be interested in moving up into the...
And I plan on giving them a call and see if they're interested in doing that and see what we can do.
Sounds good.
Like I said, if you're interested, stop by our office, go to the website, fill out that expression of interest. I think we've already heard about the December meetings. We had that home occupation get approved and a dog kennel operation get approved out in the county. For March, we're going to have our annual meeting. We just review the comprehensive plan, which hasn't changed, and I will review the zoning changes that we've talked about with the Board of County Commissioners already, the, talking about changing home occupation codes and talking about changing sign codes so that they can, the planning commission can plan when they want to schedule that. We also do a usual study session, talk about ex parte communication and making decisions in zoning. So, I try to give them a little training once a year. All of our violations, they're all in progress right now, so there's not much we can do until, for instance Webster, we're just waiting for them to finish up their sewer line in construction. They're taking care of it, but I just don't take it off the books until it's done. Environmental activities, this is the first time I've done an annual report for the environmental activities, so we're trying to collect more and more information. We did two hundred and nine inspections over the last year and that's for all four counties. A little lower than last year and like I said, I've only gone back to 2013 for the information we have, so I don't know what a true average, what normal is for us, but I'm expecting two hundred and nine is probably about normal. Most of the work gets done in the third and fourth quarter and it kind of shocked me to see how much is done in the fourth, but you figure that's all work done before the ground freezes. So, once, once that happens, most of the sanitarians' work is at least slowed to a crawl. Looking at the four counties, as we expected, Saline County uses a little over half of the services that we provide. Ottawa comes next at twenty-two percent and then Lincoln and Ellsworth each make up about twelve percent. Still working on those care grant activities. We have easily met the hundred healthy home inspections that we wanted to do. We've done, we're still at sixteen homes for radon mitigation that we've helped people, but if there's anybody out there, like I said last month, if you need a radon kit, they are free in my office. We'll be happy to have you test. For things coming up, we're still working on that floodplain map. I hope to hear from the state in April for the next step of the mapping process, which is to start the preliminary map. That's the first formal step for FEMA. Once that happens, it takes about eighteen months of public hearings and other FEMA regulations, basically make sure we get all the public input we can before those maps become adopted. Once they do become adopted, we have to make a code change to formally adopt those maps too. Then the last thing, coming soon, every year, we do a tax exemption for Phillips Lighting for their gas oxy furnace. This is the last year. You should be seeing, actually, the only thing we do for the planning, for the Board of County Commission is report. It's the staff that will take a review, the county clerk, county administrator, myself and the county appraiser, review the application, make sure they're still in compliance and from talking to Phillips, they're still in compliance. And then, that's all, we just report to you that it's been done and that they're still complying. If they're not complying, that would change things.
Looking at our violations on that number four where they're waiting on FEMA to approve change in floodplain maps, why is that?
They were supposed to apply, they're having some difficulties with FEMA because we're in the process, our approved maps are from nineteen eighty-six. The property is in the floodplain. The problem is the septic system they built is also in the floodplain, which is not allowed. They had built up the ground so they can have that ground removed from the map. Because we're working on new maps, the new maps will show that ground at a lower flood elevation, which would meet to where their ground is. The reviewer for FEMA is having trouble, and this is statewide, they're having trouble where counties are adopting the new maps and using that information as the best available and we're trying to work that out so that we can get this done. He can have that map changed, so he's no longer in the floodplain and no longer in violation.
But, will he, can't they survey it now and find out if he's in a floodplain or not?
That's just it. It's been surveyed. The applicant, the property owner, and I both agree that the property should be removed from the floodplain. We're working with the state to work with FEMA to get that done.
I thought if you had a problem and you wanted to build, you could go and get it, get that done and you should have done this in advance.
Right.
And then they could go ahead and do it. Why can't they do it? Why can't they do it?
That's what he's going through right now. It's FEMA is not accepting the information that we're providing.
I talked to the Ottawa County Appraiser two weeks ago, and they're having a big problem with FEMA. Some of the stuff that should be coming out of the flame plane now is going back into the floodplain. It's just all messed up, what he said, it's.
I'm not sure with Ottawa County, with ours, the mapping is actually really good. What happened in his case, and I'm going to make up numbers because I don't have this all in front of me, but let's say his floodplain was at 1180 today. The new maps will show him at 1175. Well, the ground is at 1175. So the new maps, and I'm trying to tell FEMA and the state's trying to tell them the same thing, use the new map. It's the best information we have. So it would work out for this person. When you look at our flood maps, from everybody I've talked to, I'm getting a pretty good answer, well, it doesn't flood here, and the new maps show it won't flood there. Well, hopefully it won't flood there. Where it actually does flood, people have told me, well, yeah, that's where the water goes. So it's a lot more accurate. Where we increase floodplanes will be along Jip Creek. There's a little more flooding out there, mostly because we've now had enough flood, river gauge information, that the engineers know where that floodwater really is.
Well, I think a good thing we could remind the public is before you start putting in a septic tank, get the building permit, first of all. His violation is building without a permit, working without a licensed contractor, and placing the tank in a floodplain. Get, get, come to the, get things done in order the way you're supposed to do it, and it won't have all these problems.
Honestly, the problem is 10 feet. If we had been there beforehand, we could have told him to move the house over about 10 feet, which would have made the septic tank location better, which would have cleared everything with no problems, but because it wasn't, he had to do a little extra work. We're still fighting for him. We're still trying to get this fixed for him.
Is the septic tank, it isn't in the floodplain, is it? The lateral fields in the floodplain?
Lateral lines are allowed in the floodplain. The tank itself is not.
Right, because if it's high enough that it can, water can seek its own level, it'll run in the house anyway.
Right. And the ground is high enough that we can have it, well, I think we can have it removed. FEMA disagrees with me.
Yeah. I went out on that, and I know that the lateral fields are in the flood, floodplain. I've seen the water up around them. I've had that happen in a place out east of town out here where it ran in the basement. They had three and a half foot of water come in their basement because the Saline River was out.
Right.
And it came right up into their house and they, I'm surprised that anybody even thought of putting one down in there because of that water getting into that.
And that's one of the, we don't want septic tanks in the floodplain, one, because flood will damage the tank, and two, like you said, it'll just go right back to where it can, which is your basement.
It's nasty too.
Yeah.
Just trying to make a point, citizens, come get your permits and get things done right the first time. It won't have all these.
Talk to me, I'll make it as easy as possible.
Good idea.
Real quickly here, I realize that we inspect the septic tanks, but on a home construction, who inspects that after they've received their permit?
We don't have residential codes.
Correct.
We have commercial codes and we use the city of Salina to do the inspections there. We don't have residential codes, so the only thing that we're looking for is that you're set back far enough and that you're not in the floodplain.
So then that homeowner and builder are on their own?
Yes.
Okay.
I will gladly, if people ask, I will recommend that you build, and when I make recommendations, I do it based off the building code, but I can't hold you to that.
There's no enforcement or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, Mary.
Very good. Another good report, I appreciate that. Is there any public comment or questions?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I was listening to David's report and I had a thought about, there were some other, there were some issues in the past, and I was curious if they were actually resolved and how everything was taken care of. And I believe David could probably answer that pretty easily. Do you have an update on the John Roddy Bush 1849? Is it completed? Is it done? Or do you have any future anticipated violations on this property or other properties is?
Would you, would you know that or is it a legal issue?
There's a violation reported.
There's a violation still open on 2136 West North Street. The 1849 West North Street has been cleared. The contractor cleared that off.
Okay.
And that's pending court, the other one.
Right. So that part goes into legal action, that's past you.
So that, you know, you're saying that 1849 is completed?
Correct.
For the violations?
Right, the property is no longer in violation, as far as I know.
And then the property owner has, still is the owner of that property, whoever that is?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Zoning does not take property. There is, the only way you lose your property, eminent domain is one thing, and as far as I know, the county will only do that for a road if we desperately need it.
Right.
The only other way is you lose it by taxes.
Right.
So how long has this 2136 issue been going on and what's, what's happening there?
It's up to legal at this point. It's probably been about a year or so.
So about, probably follow the same procedure as 1849, more than likely?
My assumption is the next step would be an injunction from the court.
Okay, well, thank you very much, David.
Further public comment? Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to, is there any other business that needs to come before the commission at this time? Seeing that, I'll move on to announcements. And Rita, this question is to you, the afternoon session. Has one of those executive sessions been canceled or do we have both of those?
We do have two that we need to talk about.
Okay, so we'll move, obviously you've done your county administrator update, so we'll just move that first executive session up to 1:30, is that correct?
If I can find the other participant, yes, that would be great.
Okay, and then we have that other one for the negotiations, okay.
So hoping the executive session, we're moving.
Right, so I do, as an announcement, I want to say, meeting number three, we'll reconvene up in the, in our office upstairs at 1:30, and it looks like we have two executive sessions. Is there any other announcements that need to come before the commission today?
Are there any Harvard graduates here?
No. Not me.
This, this is from the student guidelines from Harvard of 1636. That's a few years ago. "Let every student be plainly instructed and earnestly pressed to consider well the main end of his life and studies is to know God and Jesus Christ, which is eternal life, and therefore to lay Christ in the bottom is the only foundation of all sound knowledge and learning. In seeing the Lord only giveth wisdom, let everyone seriously set himself by prayer and secret to seek it of him. Every one shall so exercise himself in reading the scriptures twice a day, that he shall be ready to give such an account of his proficiency therein."
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn till 1:30?
So may.
Second.
All those favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you for attending.